Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good things.
Well, we went to Venice. Oh, no, they do.
They do?
Oh, yeah. The only thing that has...
System.
Because Vatican. When you go into system, you're an atheist, you come out.
You know what? This is all set.
Which it sits not only... We good?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'd like to open up the meeting and say, pledge of flag, Mr. Maginot, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, are we properly notified in the papers for the Sunshine Laws?
Yes Chairman, we are.
Thank you very much. Now have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hakevich?
Here.
Councilman Delena?
Here.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. McInone?
Present.
Ms. O'Leary? Mr. Velosen? Ms. Montilla?
Here.
Chairman Tai?
Here.
Mr. Roboff? Mr. Cornell?
Here.
Mr. Leo Cavella?
Here.
We have a call.
Very much. We have memorialization of a resolution?
Yeah, we have two of them.
Two of them, okay. And since I wasn't here, you have the numbers? For the last meeting?
Well, one, one, not, what do you mean?
Oh, here they are. The resolution for...
Yeah, let me just indicate what we, what we did last time.
Okay.
These are really, these are really amended resolutions to reflect what happened at the meeting. We enact, we adopted these two resolutions at the meeting, but they were terse, no, no, no. They were terse, prepared resolutions. After the meeting, I was able to go back and include in the resolution findings of fact and conclusions that I could not possibly know before the meeting, since there was testimony by Mr. Barry of hire and gruel. So you will notice, so we're not, we're not revoting on the substantive things that you already voted on. Your sole function is to memorialize the amended resolutions to reflect exactly what you did, we're not revoting on those things. So for example, if we take the, um, let's take the easy one, which is Fulton redevelopment plan that was unanimously denied. I included in the middle all of the testimony by Mr. Barry, you will see. I also indicated in the next paragraph, things that may have been said by the public or Sarah, so the resolution more accurately reflects the findings in fact, the conclusions of law at the hearing that I could not possibly have known until after the hearing. So to be thorough, because in, with respect to these matters, in this particular Fulton redevelopment plan, and the alleged, and the proposed amendments to the master plan, we want to be as thorough as possible. So that takes care of the Fulton Landing redevelopment plan resolution that we already voted on. So Beth is going to call the roll, and you're just voting to memorialize that which took place at the meeting. Your, your votes are not going to be, are not going to be changed. If you go back to the master plan resolution, the amended resolution, which is in front of you, similarly, there's even far more detail contained with Miss, with respect to Mr. Barry's testimony than, than in the redevelopment plan. That's the difference between what you did on the eighth and what, what we're doing on the fifteenth. So if you look on the last page where there are yes votes and no votes, five noes, because the motion was to deny the amendments to the master plan, there were five noes, three yeses. Those are not changing. You're just voting to properly memorialize these amended resolutions. So they should all be unanimous, unless you find that I did put something in there that was not reflective of what happened at the meeting.
All right, we'll do the Fulton landings one first.
Is that good?
Everybody understand what we're doing? Good?
Uh, we're doing the denying one.
The, uh, that's the Fulton landings one, right? Yes.
That's, this is the redevelopment, that you're doing, the resolution with respect to not recommending the Fulton Landing redevelopment plan.
All right. Can I have a roll call? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Hakevich?
Yes.
Mr. Delena?
Yes.
Mr. McInone?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen wasn't on here. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Matina? Matia, sorry.
Yes.
And, okay, that's it.
All right, so the next one then, Madam Secretary would be, that's, well, the other one would be the denying the addendum to the land use element and circulation plan element of the 2013 master plan.
Does everybody understand that? If, if so, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hakevich?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. McInone?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Montilla?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you've got that. What's next?
Madam, oh, I need a motion to accept the minutes from the last, uh, meeting? We don't have them.
It's only a week.
Yeah, it's only...
It's only been a week, and that's another reason why you don't have the OT resolution.
Okay. Will we have no communications?
Nope.
Educational Service Commission of New Jersey, capital review. Please, we'll be next meeting in minutes. Good evening. If you could just pull the mic down and speak into it, please.
Yes.
Okay, hi. My name is Anthony Vignolo, I'm the attorney representing the Ed Services Commission. We're here in connection with a presentation to, to the board for an addition to an existing facility in the community. It's the Center for Lifelong Learning, which is a school we built in the community about 2009. It's a school for classified children, which is also utilized by the community. And as a result of the needs for students, there's a need for us to add an additional portion of the school for the purpose of fitness center, a fitness center for the school as well. So technically, this is presented to you under the statute, which deals with the capital improvements that take place in the community. It's, I'll refer to it as a courtesy review, because your comments are taken, they're presented to the Department of Education, they can be incorporated or non-incorporated, depending upon what the commission and Department of Education wants to do. So I have, just by way of background, this property is located at 333 Cheesecake Road in Parkland Section, it's lot 1.02 in block 27. It's in an L1, sorry, it's an industrial zone, it's a permitted use in the zone. And this, the purpose tonight is to present to you the circumstances in connection with the changes that are needed to meet the students' needs. So if the board permits, I'll have Mr. Moran, who's the Business Administrator and Assistant Superintendent and Board Secretary of the Commission, give some testimony by way of the background of the school, et cetera, what we do there.
Yeah, so Counsel, there's no, at this juncture, there is, there's no spend, there's no proposed expenditure of any public funds, is that correct? This is the plan.
Yeah, this is the plan in connection with our intention to, we have to go to bid. In other words, what we have to do is have the plans first approved by the Department of Education, that's a process that's going forward. This is not a review that takes place necessarily in the community, but your input in connection with funds being expended by a public entity, us, in your community, brings us to you. And then, as a result of your decision, we'll report to the Department of Education that we were here and made a presentation to you.
Yeah, I, I agree, this is a, what's called a review of capital projects under JSA 40 colon 55 D dash 31. So, and it actually refers specifically to school boards and other public agencies, so. You have somebody you want to testify?
Yep, we do. I'll call Mr. Moran. Don't have him sworn in, use the same...
Yeah, well...
Raise your right hand. Just wear a testimony about to give the board in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, how do you got it?
I do.
Mr. Moran, would you state your affiliation with the Ed Services Commission?
I am the Business Administrator, Board Secretary of the Ed Services Commission.
You are? Your name?
Oh, Patrick M. Moran.
Thank you, Patrick.
John Stiles' last name?
Oh, he, she does, I don't...
M-O-R-A-N.
And you were involved in connection with the original construction of the facility back in 2009?
I was.
Okay, what was the purpose of the school?
The school was a, well, it's two purposes. It was built as a public school for primarily autistic students. Along with that, there was an aquatic center and fitness area constructed with that project, which is both used by the students in that building, students in our other buildings, and the community here in Saraville.
And what, what use does the community put to it?
They use the pool, they have memberships in the pool, they take swimming lessons, they work out in the existing fitness area.
And what's the need for an addition, for what purpose?
Well, at this point in time, A, the fitness area that exists is not large enough to accommodate all of our students and accommodate the public use, you know, in the evenings. We're also expanding our services to a adult community service for disabled adults, and that fitness center will not only serve our students, will serve those adults, but will also serve as an employment center for the disabled adults.
Approximately how many students do we service right now?
It's about 200.
And do we have any estimates to how many additional students would be brought in as a result of the addition? Is it to serve the same students?
It's to serve the same students.
That's all I have, Mr. Moran, with my background.
Does anybody have a question of the, Mr. Moran?
Thank you. I have Peter Campisano, who's the architect, in, in connection with the development, the design and development of the project, and I'd like to call Mr. Campisano.
Mr. Campisano, anyone to raise your right hand?
Other hand.
Just wear the testimony about to give the planning board in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, how do you got it?
I do. The name?
Could you give us the benefit of your, your academic training and the licenses that you hold in New Jersey?
Just fill your last name.
Yes, sir. Peter Campisano, C-A-M-P-I-S-A-N-O.
Could you give us the benefit of your, your academic background, as well as any licenses that you hold in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and have held that license for about 30 years. The majority of my service and my professional career has been around the New Jersey public school market.
You've been previously qualified by other boards?
Including this board, sir, yes.
Can I make a motion to accept this credentials?
Make a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Mr. Campisano, have you been involved in connection with preparation of plans and drawings for this project?
I have.
Can you briefly describe what you, what you put up, by way of, I guess, renderings as to what the exterior of the building would look like?
Yes.
Let's mark them A1 and A2.
Certainly.
One on the left is A1, and the one on the right is A2.
Does it, yes.
Yeah, that'd be...
Because we're going to keep them.
You can keep them.
It's not an application, this is just a concept plan, so we don't have to keep them. Again, it's another one of those rules that if you're not really paying attention, you could, like, make a mistake.
So if you're familiar with, obviously you are, Cheesecake Road, approximately in 2009, an approximate 90,000 square foot facility was constructed for autistic children, the Center for Lifelong Learning. That facility did include an aquatic center and a fitness center, as Mr. Moran testified. This is what you see before you, is an 18,000 square foot, two-story fitness center. It's about 13,000 square feet on the first floor, with an open atrium, and about 5,000 square feet of mezzanine area on, on the second floor.
Now, if this were a standard site plan application, can you describe for the board all the site plan criteria, in other words, the parking, parking, uh, the other issues?
You don't really have to do that.
Oh, okay, I was...
No, you don't have to give us technical stuff.
Okay.
If this had been submitted actively, it's like what's going to be constructed, the kind of, that would be submitted to the board?
They do. They were, and are consultants, yes.
So we'll make this, we'll make this A3, is this what you're talking about, the submission you made?
Yes, sir.
All right, all the details are contained herein?
Yes, sir.
All right, A3 and evidence.
How, how will the construction impact the site in any way?
Well, we, we've looked at the site in several meetings. We've met with Kirk Mick, your construction official, to talk about the construction, the construction class. We've met with Mr. Moran, and we have organized a safety plan, whereas we will separate the work area from the student area for the life of the, the project. We estimate the project to be anywhere from nine to 10, 11 months in construction.
Will it impact the current parking or access to the rest?
No, it, well, if, if, the, the current parking right now is sufficient enough, more than sufficient enough, for the existing facility. And the daytime use of the existing center, even with the expansion, based on our evidence, is, is limited. Most of, it's a non-dual use situation, so additional parking is not needed at this time. There is more than enough parking to accommodate both uses, since they're non-simultaneous.
Any questions of the architect? Kelly?
As I said, this started in 2009, as a school for autistic children?
Correct.
So what, when was it, the YMCA?
It was.
It was, it was never the YMCA. The YMCA, Patrick, you want to answer this?
I can explain, the municipality uses the facility, the pool area for, for the purposes. It's our school, but it's offered for municipal use, that's the pool.
So from, you know, groundbreaking, it was the school?
Yes, the YMCA, we use the YMCA as a management agency for the pool, and we opened it, because we didn't have the expertise to run it ourselves.
But it's basically our students and...
Anybody else have any questions of the architect? If not, you can bring it...
One more.
Okay, go ahead.
You said that A3, I think, was your submission, your engineering plans?
Correct.
There was a table that was a little confusing as to the number of parking spaces and employees. Are there any additional employees with this addition?
We don't believe we'll have any additional employees. If, if so, they'll be minimal?
Any number of additional employees would really be in the evening, not during the day. There may be a, a couple, but no more than we have now.
Because based on the table, it appears that there's 100 additional employees, which need, you need 100 additional parking places, and it shows that you have a deficit of 100, but that doesn't, it appear to be correct, based on what you're saying.
No.
I'll have to talk to the engineering at that...
So you've got 219 spaces now, which is adequate for the existing use, as well as whatever goes along with the proposed addition?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
You're going to have that corrected?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions of the architect? If not, you can bring up your next witness? You want to close?
I'll try to be brief.
There you go.
Again, as I said, we, we, although it's characterized as a capital projects review, we consider it a cursory view, we're here to let you know what's going on in your community by a public agency. It's an existing facility, it's needed to service the students that we deal with, which are classified students, because of their special needs. In addition to using the pool, the athletic facility is necessary, because there's a lot of physical, physical training that goes along with those students, and it's part of their educational needs, as well as their, their physical needs. And for that reason, it's inadequate, and we're, we're seeking to expand it and utilize the facility for ourselves, and we anticipate, and Mr. Moran indicated, this is, this is a, this is a jointly used community asset. It's used by Saraville for swimming, and also for the athletic center, which is now going to be expanded. So we're asking, I don't know that you have to take any formal action, but if you have recommendations concerning the facility, we're certainly open to hearing those and incorporating those into our report to the Department of Education, that we were here, and these were your comments.
Okay.
So just, just so the board understands, under, under 55 D 31, this is what statutorily comes before you, and that is that the planning board reviews and recommends any capital project that may necessitate the expenditure of public funds in conjunction with your master plan. So it's a permitted use, Mr. Cornell?
Chairman, yes, this was discussed when it originally was submitted, and it was determined to be a permit.
So that would make it consistent with the master plan? And really, that's what you're reviewing, if you had any other recommendations concerning with that?
Mr. Chairman? I was on the board when they originally came and built this, I was also on the board at the time, toured this facility several times during its construction and afterwards. And it's in an ideal location, they're providing a service that just cannot be provided for these kids in a, in a normal school district, so, I mean, it's, it's something that, I think it's an asset to the community, I know we have disabled kids that are probably enrolled there. And it's, you know, appreciate the courtesy, it was a good presentation, I recall, when they came and made the presentation, and it's an ideal location, it really is, it's good access to it, and...
Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Moran, thank you very much for taking care of that building. Since it's been built, I've been back there, I used that facility ever, and it's well, very well maintained. I think this is going to be an added plus for the community, and especially for the students.
Agreed.
You're welcome.
We would ask, at the end of your consideration deliberations, depending upon what you decide, we would ask that some document, a letter, be addressed to the, to the commission to indicate that we were here, and that these were your comments, or that you had no comments with respect to the presentation.
Well, I'll draft a resolution.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anybody else have, you want to say anything? You're good, you're good, we're good? All right, we'll get that resolution, and next meeting, we'll have it sent out to you. Thank you very much for a nice, clean presentation. You're welcome.
You gonna vote?
We have to vote?
No.
Oh, okay. We have a roll call vote?
When do we vote? We're voting on...
Yeah, what are you voting on?
We're voting on a recommendation? Uh, yeah.
We're voting on that we're recommending that they did a good job.
We'll, we'll vote for the council to do a resolution to say we, it's agreed.
All right, we're going to vote that the, to have the...
It's just a recommendation?
It's just a recommendation, so we're going to, we're going to vote for a favorable recommendation.
Exactly.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ay, my ay, not the easy one.
Oh, no. Nothing's ever easy for me.
Okay. North American Properties, the River, and Informal, you guys are up.
Let's tell us who you are and who you are appearing on behalf of.
Sure, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith, I'm an attorney...
Has it changed?
I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here on behalf of Saraville Seaport Associates Urban Renewal, which is the designated redeveloper for the former National Lead tract here in Saraville.
Can you please lay the, lay the groundwork for what's in front of the board now?
Sure.
Versus what's already been adopted?
Sure. So we're in the midst of a, a process, and I know we were here back in April, going over the vision for the project in general, and kind of the long history of the National Lead site. The snapshot of this particular process is a little shorter. What is before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan. The waterfront redevelopment plan was initially adopted in 1999, and has been amended numerous times over the years, most recently in 2013. As part of the re-envisioning of the site, which you heard about in April, there are certain amendments that Sarah has recommended to the waterfront redevelopment plan. At the end of March, March 28th, Sarah adopted a resolution indicating that they approve of these proposed amendments, and recommending that they be forwarded on to the council for consideration. The council in April adopted a resolution forwarding those proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan here to the planning board, for you to review, and if you review favorably, to transmit back to council. The council would then introduce an ordinance to formally amend the redevelopment plan on, it would happen, be introduced on first reading, and then a subsequent meeting could be adopted on second reading by the council. So we are at step two, I'm sorry, step three of a five-step dance. Sarah, council, planning board, council, council. And this is just on the redevelopment plan amendment. There are many other actions that will occur over the course of, hopefully, the next several months, and even years. For example, we would hope to come in and submit, submit a site plan here to the planning board, and probably numerous site plans for various parts of the project. Those applications have not been filed. All that's before you this evening are proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan itself. Now, I know we went over a number of those amendments back in April, so before I say more, I should open it up to see if anybody has questions, based on the review of the package that was forwarded to you by the council.
And they're contained in the documentation that's been supplied to the board members. On the top, it says the word ordinance, that really hasn't been adopted yet. There's been no first reading on the ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct, not yet.
And on the bottom, it is, in fact, the redevelopment plan, and the crossouts are that which is being changed?
Correct, so...
Can you just give us a synopsis of what the change is involved? Do you have a witness that's going to do that? And who do we...
I, I can run through it, we also have Kevin Polson here, from North American Properties, and we do have Dan Bush here, from Mesa Engineering.
However you want to do it, you know, I mean...
I can run through the general changes, and then there are...
How do you do that? And if the board needs to hear some formal testimony from somebody else, they can ask you.
You went through this all in April, right?
We did go through...
Yes.
Most of it in April, so I would be happy to reiterate, if the board would like us to.
Does anybody need it reiterated?
I only had one concern, and that you answered satisfactorily about the verbiage that was changed about the school age children, and why that was changed, and you explained the rationale, that's the only question I had.
Mr. Kelly, you okay? Yeah, everybody else is all right? Okay, I guess we can...
We have just one other short thing to bring to the board's attention.
Okay.
And that is, if you look...
I'm going to hold you there, just one.
It's one. If you look on page three of what's in front of you, page three of the proposed amendment, in Roman numeral two, there's a paragraph 12. You'll, you'll see that there are blank lines for dates. It's our recommendation that, being that this is part of an ordinance, that the planning board shouldn't send it back to council with blank lines for dates.
Do we all have these documents?
I don't see it.
There's, they're right up here, here, you can, in case anybody...
Well, it refers to a master redevelopment agreement.
Correct.
Well, how do we know the date of that?
The date of that is May 14th, 2008.
Well, then that's the answer, we'll put that in there.
And then the other, the other issue is that the, there's a blank line for the judgment of repose. The judgment of repose is the final court order that a judge...
I don't have that yet.
Will, right, will hopefully enter to finish your affordable housing case here in Saraville. We had thought that that would happen by now.
Why don't we just say judgment of, of, of proposed, anticipated to be entered, something like...
So I, I came with...
What language do you want?
I came with proposed suggestions, just to...
Right, what is it?
So that, we thought that the paragraph, do you see the paragraph that says, "The design and construction of the age-targeted residential units"? Why don't I pass this out, so everybody has it in front of them?
That's what it is. The same thing.
And again, we're not, this is not a substantive change, we just, if it's going to be an adopted ordinance, there shouldn't be a blank line in it. So, our, our suggestion, as I said, is to refer to the redevelopment agreement once, instead of twice, and to date, put in the date, which is May fourteenth, two thousand eight. And then, where the paragraph that says, "The design and construction of the age-targeted residential units must comply with the State and Federal Fair Housing Acts", we thought, instead of just saying State and Federal Fair Housing Acts, that we'd actually put the statutory citations. So that's what's in front of you, just NJSA fifty-two, colon, twenty-seven, D one, the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination, which is NJSA ten, colon, five, dash, twelve point five. And then we indicated any related judgment of repose for the borough of Saraville, if such judgment is in effect. We anticipate there will be a judgment, we hope it will be in effect, but that's not in our control, it's in the control of the borough and its attorneys, and I'm sure, as you all are aware, the long saga here in Saraville...
Control or out of control, one of those two.
So rather than a date for judgment of repose, which we don't have yet, this is, we thought a perhaps better way of saying, if one is entered, we will comply with it. So our thought would be, if you would, if you could recommend that language to fill in those blanks, just for the sake of administrative clarity, we would be very much appreciative.
If you have any questions, then you can vote on it. Vote on the proposed changes. No, this is a redevelopment plan, there's no no's.
No.
There's no public hearing.
The, the public hearing will occur before the council.
Right.
That's right.
Anybody have any questions of the lawyer? Anybody have any questions of the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan, as discussed, and all the changes that we've spoke about?
I do, actually. Number thirteen. And this is the one where it says assisted living facilities and continuing care retirement communities. I just wanna understand, continuing care retirement, what does that mean?
So continuing care retirement community is a community that usually has a continuum of services. So it would often include, and I've worked on a few of them, they generally would include, you know, the continuum starting at skilled nursing care, as being the most sort of restrictive, and most nursing-intensive environment, going up to assisted living, and then going up to some independent senior living. But usually, the idea, if you think of, in Tintin Falls, there's a community that's a continuing care retirement community. It allows someone to move in who's a senior, who can live independently, and then as their needs change, they can move into an assisted living part of the facility, and then, if needed, into a skilled nursing facility.
And, I'm sure you won't know where I'm going with this, the conversion of the nursing care, or nursing home, to a rehab center, is this, this woman's that same category? Of a facility that we converted, that we approved it, like, we approved it as a nursing home. And then, it just was overturned and turned into a rehab center. Huge problem. So if this has that same opportunity, then I have...
The continuing care retirement community is something that was already in this particular ordinance. I do know that it is something that is licensed under the Department of Health. I don't believe our intention at this time is anything involving a rehab facility. Our only intention in changing the ordinance was that skilled nursing facilities, we thought was synonymous with nursing homes, so we just moved that definition with nursing home, rather than with assisted living, 'cause it seemed like those were two different things.
Is there any way to protect us so that we can't see more nursing homes or facilities, with, turn them into a rehab center? Is there any language we can put in this that, that helps protect the borough?
I don't know if this is the document to do that in.
Yeah, I don't know either, Sarah certainly hasn't recommended that.
And I think the case that Ms. Lee's referring to, they were required to obtain a use variance. It was not a permitted use, it did go before the zoning board. The zoning board denied the application, but it was overturned in court because it was deemed to be inherently beneficial. And she has a concern about that happening again, but...
The only way you prevent that from happening again is not build those type of...
I can also say that this is a redevelopment plan, so we are not able to get a devariance from anything in here. If the, if a proposed use does not comply with the uses permitted here, it would have to go back to the council to amend the plan, and we would go through this process again. So if, if that particular situation involved the use variance, that's actually not available to us in a redevelopment area.
Right. Okay, anybody else have any questions? What's your pleasure?
So what do we have to do?
Hold on, you know, confirming or recommending proposed changes?
I make a motion to still do that.
I have a second?
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, do, can we say something from the public?
It's really not a public hearing.
It's not a, you can, you can say something at the end. Okay, thank you very much. Do I get a second? Okay. All in favor? Or a roll call? Yeah. Sorry.
Mr. Rukovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. Montea?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
If you can capitalize those changes, you know, some of the language, just...
Sure, the, the handout that I just circulated?
It's in there?
I will, but what I can do is send you a clean copy, it doesn't show the red and blue.
I just wanna make sure it's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
They'll figure it out. Thank you very much for your coming to Saraville. Old business, new business, administrative matters?
None.
None?
When's our next meeting?
Uh, our next meeting is June fifth.
We have a resolution drawn.
Yeah, we've got a couple adoptions, it should be a short meeting, we have no...
No applications?
No applications, as, as of now. I'm gonna call for a public portion, open up to the public, anybody wanna say anything? Sir, please come up to the mic and state your name and your address. Good evening, sir. Yeah, there you go.
Public comment, yes.
Not on an application, it's not anything...
You wanna swear yourself in, go ahead.
I don't swear, so...
Neither, I try not to.
Okay, I just wanted to mention about the nursing home aspect and the name. I know my ninety-three-year-old grandmother, stepmother, broke her leg, had to go into a rehab center, but it was also a nursing home, but as soon as she learned it was a nursing home, she refused to do anything and passed away. Okay, so a name for the older citizens, 'cause I'm getting up there, means an awful lot. So, they don't wanna go in the nursing home, but they will go into rehab. Okay? At town council meeting, somebody mentioned that no single aspect of what you're doing, whether it's down National Lead, near Main Street, or near Lakeview Drive, is separate entities. One of the things I saw in here, which are minor, is wanting sidewalks put in, which is very logical. Is the entire bypass gonna have sidewalks? Because you're gonna have open areas and sidewalks, and open areas and sidewalks. I would have loved to see what changes you made into the modifications to the bypass that you just approved tonight, because I think I had a lot of input into...
We didn't talk about the bypass tonight.
Okay, you talked about the warehouse.
And that was just, that was just to memorialize the resolutions of what happened at the meeting last month.
Which you were at, last week, last week.
That's what I'm asking, you know, all those concerns that everybody brought up, was that included into the circulation plan?
Tom, let me answer that, the meeting, the, the bypass road, I know you have a concern of that, it's not part of what we did last week.
So it had nothing to do with the circulation plan that you just approved?
It's overall, no, not that we just approved, we just approved not amending the master plan to impact the circulation plan. I mean, we're not changing what's in the master plan.
Okay.
That's what we did.
The circulation is there now, we decided not to, not to go against that.
Okay, that's the danger for our community, is the circulation ending at Kimball Drives. We're concerned about safety of our children, that...
Circulation I'm talking about is the Ernston Road extension.
He's talking about the bypass terminating at Kimball Drive, not being built all the way in one shot.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's what your concern is.
And that's, that's a master plan issue, and that has to, that has to be...
Ms. Chairman, I think I can, the existing master plan shows the bypass running beyond Kimball Drive East, out to Crossman Road, and out to National Lead property.
Right, the full extent.
Correct.
But I understand it's also broken up into two parts.
Just let, let me just mention...
Oh, sorry.
That's what the master plan indicates. The master plan also indicates the extension of Lakeview Drive outward Main Street. At the hearing you attended last week, there was some discussion about amending the master plan to eliminate that interconnection between Lakeview Drive and Main Street. No modifications to the bypass at all, there's that interconnection, and that was not approved by the board. The circulation plan stays the same, it still shows the bypass for the entire length, and it also shows the extension of Lakeview Drive out to Main Street.
Okay, I appreciate your time, I know you're between a rock and a hard place a lot of times.
We are. And that bypass road is gonna be, you know, funded down the road for a couple of years, because not only do you have to, just because it's a, it's on the paper, we have to get somebody to build it, you know, and right now...
Yeah, and as I left the last meeting, my main concern is safety and the quality of life.
Yeah?
And I know you're trying your best, so...
We are. Okay, thank you very much, anybody else from the public have anything to say? Anybody else? If not, I'd like to take a motion to close the public...
Make a motion to close the public portion?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make my favorite motion.
What's that?
Adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all coming, thank you. Okay, I'll do that right now. John, you hungry? John, you hungry?
I had to get that...
I'm going without you.
Did you eat enough in Italy?
That, from an earlier...
I didn't eat, I didn't eat dinner.
You know what, you, they don't, they're pizza...
But it wasn't included in this.
Get a pizza, it's got four little pieces.
The last packet that I didn't get.
Yeah, the last packet, but I don't know why, if you and the attorney, so it has to be something not with Saraville...
Right, it was, well, it's dated, postmarked five, too, so why it showed up, you know, the tenth, I don't know.
Yes, it's, it's the same thing.
It's funny.
Think we made it.
What happened to the velocin?
Ossin went to play at Eagles Ridge today.
Oh, with who?
Well, he had taken a horse... All right, I will see you guys later. And he wanted me to go play, and I looked at him, I said... He wanted to stay for dinner. Thanks. Are you coming to the, to the PGA tournament? You're on at Bethpage Black?
No.
This week, no?
No.
You going, Mark?
I'm, I'm operating the lasers on Thursday and Sunday.
So, so I heard you had a, you had a save my ass, 'cause I gave the wrong cheese.
I'm operating the lasers.
I saw, I'm a laser operator.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, so I get to hang out there, I get to see all the golfers.
It's such a pain in the ass to do that.
I did it today, just for training, which I need, which I'm gonna fly there.
Five hours to get out here. Beginning of the day, I don't know who was going out, and seven hours to get, I couldn't finish driving. I can remember it to this, I was exhausted.
Well, when we go, we're buying all the tires. He's got a guy, he's got a guy that's gonna come right there, do the tires, the ball bearings, everything. Thank you, thank you for everything.
There was a parking lot, it was just ridiculous. I'm taking a drink.
Yes.
What was her last name?
Christine Cofone. She goes by Christine Navarro Cofone.
Tom, how was Italy?
Unbelievable, Mark, you gotta go.
So...
I wanna go.
And she likes to use her names like that.
The tour guide that we went on, Gate One, or less, every, like, we went, went to the Vatican, it's a two-hour wait to get in, we were in twenty minutes. We went to Pompeii, we were in in ten minutes, they have all their tickets...